Twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, along with Chairman Phil Mendelson, I introduced Bill twenty-one dash thirty-nine. And on October fifth, two thousand and fifteen, Bill twenty-one dash four-twenty-eight was introduced in the Secretary's office by Chairman Mendelson on behalf of the mayor. Both of the bills before us today amend different sections of the School Reform Acts to allow for preference for military-dependent students. First, Bill twenty-one dash thirty-nine, the Military Installation Public Charter School Amendment Act of two thousand and fifteen would allow a public charter school applicant that is seeking to establish a military preference to apply to the public charter school board. It would give the PSB the authority to approve the preference for a public charter school to be located on a military installation in the District of Columbia as long as the preference for dependence of active members of the United States Armed Forces is for no more than half of the public charter schools' seats. The second bill, twenty-one dash four-two-eight, the School Choice for Military Families Amendment Act of two thousand and fifteen, would permit public charter schools to provide an admissions preference to students who reside on the United States military base or installation and whose parents or guardian is an active-duty member of the United States military. I believe that this is a very important issue and one that we need to address so that we can find ways that we can aid the families who are serving our country. It is my number-one priority to ensure that every child is in the best position to learn. This includes military families who may only be in the District of Columbia for a short time but still deserve access to the best options for their children's education. I think that we have two bills before us today that will allow us to have this important conversation and determine what the best solution there is to meet the needs of our military families. So with that, I know that some people are still making their way here, but we do have, I think, a couple of panels that we can call and get started in the hearing, and we'll go from there. So if Michael Augustus Matthew Lee, who is a veteran, come forward, that would be great. And if Jill Gaten's, Community Affairs Leader for Hampton Roads Region, would come up, that would be also great. Mr. Lee, as is the tradition, you have the first word. Please proceed. Three minutes.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Grosso. May God and Jesus truly be with all of the eight thousand veterans committed suicide in two thousand and twelve. I think this has been going on ten to fifteen days, about ten years. But, Councilmember Grosso, everything you've done since you've been on council to serve the people of this city, one of you was handcuffed by the police, standing in front of your home. They bring you over to the CPAP building. "Mr. Grosso, if you don't take this pill, we're going to inject you." Then they let me go, but there's nothing wrong with me. And then to be handcuffed by the police, standing in front of my home, it's very, very... Standing in my living room, "Bring me over to United Medical Center." After eight days, fifth day, "Mr. Lee, if you don't take this pill, we're going to inject you." Veterans scheming against veterans. It's very, very sad. James B. Sutton is wrong. They're all over there at DHS. Just example of the corruption in this city. I had to say that because this happened back in two thousand and thirteen, and it's still so very, very sad. So may God and Jesus be with all these veterans who committed suicide. Then, Michael, Veterans of America Association, number one. Vietnam War Museum, number two, respectfully. America's Best Security Company, number three. Defense Contract Security Network, number four. The Veterans Exercise Team, number five. The Veterans Exercise Center, number six. Number seven, Our Father in Heaven, and seven A, Iraq-Afghanistan Memorial. Seven, uh, seven is Our Father in Heaven, seven A, Iraq-Afghanistan Memorial. Then seven B, No Veterans Committing Suicide. Seven C, Veterans Commission on Suicide. And seven D, To Save a Life. As you know, sir, over eight thousand soldiers have lost their life in Afghanistan. Eight thousand, six thousand and twenty-three. Over fifty-one thousand have been wounded. Over one thousand five hundred have lost arms, hands, legs, and feet, been trapped out the last couple of years. Some have been blinded and paralyzed and severely burned, severely disabled. And when you agree, sir, to be blinded or paralyzed, severely burned, severely disabled, so very, very serious issues that these soldiers and veterans got to deal with, sir. And then, you know, they say about in two thousand and twelve, eight thousand veterans committed suicides. It's been going on about ten years now. And so, House Appropriations Committee, House Armed Services Committee, House Veteran Affairs Committee, House Committee Education and the Workforce, House Committee Oversight and Government Reform, House Permanent Select Committee on Intelligence, Senate Committee on Appropriations, Senate Committee on Armed Services, Senate Committee Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions, Senate Committee Veteran Affairs, Senate Special Select Committee on Intelligence, House Homeland Security, Senate Homeland Security, Public Health and Safety, Public Safety and Security, the Law of Education, the Business of Education, the Report on Law, the Report on Security, Report on Health, and the Report on Education. And then, anybody saying, you know, well, I don't have much time, but, uh, every veteran in this city, every veteran, report to the Secretary. Eight in Vermont, Robert A. McDowell, the Secretary, Sloan D. Gibson, the Deputy Secretary, Tammy Kenz, General Counsel, and Rich D. Griffin, the Inspector General, and the Veterans Health Administration, the Under-Secretary of Health, Dr. David Schalkin, the very best director, the best medical center, veterans in the hospital, veterans who are dying, veterans who are suffering, veterans who are pain, may God and Jesus be with them. And then Department of Defense, Department of Homeland Security, Department of Veteran Affairs, Department of Justice, let there be light and ministry for soldiers to keep them alive. God be with them, to keep them sharp, to keep them strong, to keep them secure, to keep them safe. Thank you, Mr. Grosso, sir. I went seventeen seconds over. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ms. Gaten, good morning.
I'm going to use my notes a little more than he did.
That's all right. Just make sure you turn the microphone on. Mr. Lee, you might want to turn yours off so we don't get any back. There we go. Thank you.
Is this on? Okay. My name is Jill Gaten, and I'm with the Military Child Education Coalition. I'm also on the Virginia Compact Commission for Military Connected Children. MSEC is a global organization with a mission focused on ensuring high-quality educational opportunities for military-connected children and youth affected by mobility, family separation, and transition. The Interstate Compact, which DC and all fifty states have adopted, is focused on reducing transitional disruptions for military-dependent children. MSEC is highly supportive of legislation to identify one charter school in DC to hold up to fifty percent of seats for military students to create a safe, inclusive learning environment for families for whom the current lottery procedures may present challenges. From our understanding, the school will also provide a high-quality educational opportunity for civilian-dependent students, allowing both populations to benefit. Over two million K-12 students in the United States have one or both parents serving in the armed services. Over eighty percent of these children attend public schools. These highly mobile children move six to nine times during their educational career, and the timing of these moves often results in educational disruptions. I applaud the District of Columbia for adopting the Military Interstate Compact. I would also like to express gratitude on behalf of military-dependent students and their families for considering both of these amendments to allow equitable access for military dependents into DC's charter schools. MSEC has extensive resources to offer schools with high concentrations of military-dependent students. We provide professional development, student-to-student peer support programs, opportunities for scholarships, and many other programs designed to meet the needs of schools with high concentrations of military-dependent students. In DC, we are not able to allocate our resources effectively to meet the needs of students at Joint Base Anacostia-Boling, and we are not alone. There are many other organizations that provide resources for military-dependent students, but we need to know where those students are located to provide those resources. The parents of over two hundred children on this base have elected to home-educate their children, and from my understanding, the over eight hundred students at JABAB attend nearly forty different schools, resulting in long commutes, military-dependent students attending schools that are not aware of their unique needs, and safety concerns for parents. Can you imagine the challenges presented to military families who wish to attend after-school events or wish to... or students who wish to communicate with their school community through extracurricular and sports activities? Participation in extracurricular activities such as sports, honor societies, clubs, and service organizations can equal scholarships and opportunities for students to create friendships and cultural ties to their new schools. In recent studies investigating the perceptions of military parents, educational disruptions have been identified as the most challenging aspect of relocation. The quality of the education military-connected children receive affects enlistment, retention, morale, and has a role in operational readiness. The two thousand and fourteen Blue Star Family Survey indicated that thirty-two percent of military-connected parents with children in school responded that the reason they were geobatching voluntarily living separate from their family members was to support their child's education. Military families make a lot of hard choices. This committee has the power to lessen the burden of these families. MSEC kindly asks that you support these amendments. I welcome your questions and thank you for this opportunity to present.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Gaten. I appreciate you being here today and testifying on behalf of your organization and the work that you do for the children of the military, people who are serving in the military. I do have a couple of follow-up questions for you. The first is, there's another bill on there as well, the four-twenty-eight, which was introduced at the request of the mayor, that would expand the military preference to all charter schools in the District of Columbia. The way I understand it, in DCPS, there is a kind of unspoken preference that the chancellor does move students in when needed, but we needed it to do for charter schools because they're so limited in the fact that they have to always be in the lottery. What's your thought on that bill? Is that just another continuation? Would you like both of these bills? Or have you had a chance to look at it? You can always get back to us on the record if you want as we move this through.
We support both pieces of legislation. Any legislation that would open up opportunities for military-dependent students to have equitable access to the schools in DC would be something that MSEC would support and certainly I support personally.
I think your point about travel is an important point as well, the students that have to travel so far to go to schools and are spread out all over the city. That's a reality as well for all of our students in the city, though. It's not just the military reality, although the base is a specific location, and that makes it a little different. But students in this city, it is remarkable how much they travel and how hard that is on parents throughout the city to do that. And we do have a kids' ride free program, so right now the students can get that subsidy to help on the metro as well as the buses. That does help some, but I know it doesn't solve the problem of parents getting there to participate and engage. And so, we're constantly worried about that and thinking about that across the whole system. The last question I want to ask of you is, there's this thing that you... this point that you raised, it's, I think, important for us to note. These bills will not solve the problem of coming in mid-year and being able to slot into a charter school because of the fact that it's so tied to the lottery. If you're not here at the right time, what do military families do now? They either homeschool or can get slotted into a DCPS traditional school. These bills won't do that. Do you have some thoughts on that?
I'm a military spouse with three children. We've moved eleven times, so I have lots of thoughts on moving with children and putting schools...
That's a lot.
...children in schools. Many families choose to homeschool. Some families choose to privately educate. In this area, from my understanding, a lot of families participate in homeschool co-ops. That's pretty much the norm. And then many families won't enroll their children in school until the following school year. I experienced that myself, moving... I moved two children in kindergarten, and we had the choice of putting them in a second... putting them in a kindergarten off-base or waiting for a slot, and we chose to wait another year because kindergarten wasn't mandatory in the state that we happen to be in.
Oh, right, right. Have you ever been in one of the defense schools? Were they the ones on the base?
Only in Okinawa, Japan. So we were very much assigned to specific schools in that region.
Right.
So I haven't been in a situation like DC where there are so many choices, but as a spouse, I would have thought very carefully about accompanying my husband to DC, knowing that my son... knowing that my sons were going to be traveling that distance.
Right.
I likely would have chosen to live in Fairfax or chosen to have my husband geobatch, which we've done before, to allow my children to stay in school for the entire school year.
Right. Where are your children in school now?
My son... my oldest son is now in the Marine Corps. I have one child in college, and then my youngest son attends a charter school down in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. It's called Green Run Collegiate, and it predominantly enrolls military-dependent students from Lincoln Military Family Housing.
Okay. Interesting. Well, thank you very much for coming down. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Lee, for your thoughts on this. That's very important. Appreciate it. We're going to call now Sean Toller, Regional Vice President for Imagine Schools, Inc., as well as Douglas Rice, Principal Imagine Andrews Public Charter School.
Good morning, Mr. Grosso.
Good morning.
My name is Edward Hayes. I'm Deputy General Counsel of Imagine Schools, and I was going to ask you for permission to present a statement on behalf of Sean Toller, who was tied up in traffic, but Mr. Toller has now arrived, and I will let him present his own testimony.
All right then. Mr. Toller, come on in. And who's else with you? Are you Mr. Rice?
Yes, I am.
And who are you, ma'am?
I'm Dr. Chloe Marshall. I'm a Regional Director for the Mid-Atlantic Region for Imagine Schools.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Are you presenting testimony too, or are you here for questions and answers?
Yes.
How about you, Mr. Rice?
Questions and answers.
Okay. Well, then, Mr. Toller, I think the pressure's all on you. Nothing like just flying in here and having to talk right away, but go for it.
Thank you so much. So, good morning. I am Sean Toller, Regional Vice President for Imagine Schools, representing the Mid-Atlantic Region. I am pleased to speak with you today about charter schools on military bases. I have been principal of a Kip Middle School in Maryland and principal of a charter school in DC. I now support operations of two DC charter schools and four in Prince George's County, Maryland. Most important for today's discussion, one of those Maryland charter schools is Imagine Andrews Public Charter School, a K-through-eight school with four hundred and seventy-two students located on Joint Base Andrews about thirty minutes from here. Our governing board requested that we appear today before you to offer a testimony on our experience in serving military families. I am joined this morning by Mr. Howard Douglas Rice, the Principal of Imagine Andrews, and Dr. Chloe Marshall, our Regional Director. We believe it would be helpful to share briefly with this committee the background and performance of Imagine Andrews. Imagine Andrews Public Charter School opened in two thousand and eleven as a result of a process started by the military leadership of the base, which was formerly known as Andrews Air Force Base. The base commanders wanted a charter school on the base for two reasons. They wanted an excellent school on the base that would attract military families to live on the base rather than commute to the base from long distances. They also wanted a school that was attuned to the particular stresses and needs of the children and military families. For these reasons, the base leadership aggressively sought to attract a charter school to locate on the base. Once they understood that charter schools must accept all students without any preferences, they realized that their best efforts might result in a school which few children of military families might attend if applications were to come from local, non-military children, thus defeating their intent. Hence, they went to the Maryland Legislature to seek an amendment to the state charter law to assure that a school on the base could serve a majority of children from families living on the base. The Maryland Legislature, seeking to balance military needs with those of surrounding communities, passed an amendment to the charter law that provides that a charter school on a Maryland military base can reserve sixty-five percent of its seats for children of military families living on the base and thirty-five percent for children living elsewhere in the local school district. Hence, Imagine Andrews holds two lotteries each year, one for the children living on the base and one for children living elsewhere in Prince George's County. This approach in Maryland has been very successful. Here is the reason. Every year since its opening in two thousand and eleven, Imagine Andrews has had a waiting list for both students living on the base and those living elsewhere in the county, and that has been an extensive waiting list. Imagine Andrews has met the annual yearly progress standards every year. Prince George's County renewed the charter for Imagine Andrews in two thousand and thirteen with no hesitation after its initial period of operation. The school has adopted a military child initiative in which a clinical psychologist affiliate with Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health trains teachers and staff on recognizing and dealing with issues experienced by children of military family as well as supported by the local Imagine Andrews Board. Such stresses include a parent being deployed elsewhere, particularly to a war zone, or a parent returning from duty elsewhere, and changing established family dynamics, or recurring moves after a child has acclimated to a new school and community. The school has benefited from very strong support from base leadership, both in opening the school, even providing a temporary school facility, and an ongoing basis. There couldn't be more... be a more supportive community. Despite early concerns about possible issues between military and non-military children and families, the experience of mixing these two cohorts of students has been very positive. Both groups have learned from exposure to each other, and there have been very few resulting difficulties. In conclusion, the experience at Imagine Andrews Public Charter School has been very positive. It was made possible by a change in the Maryland charter law and a very strong commitment by the Joint Base Andrews leadership, the Prince George's County Public School System, and our governing board. We think there are important lessons to be learned from our experience that could benefit this committee as you contemplate military-based charter schools. Hence, on behalf of our governing board and Imagine Schools, we would like to invite interested parties from the DC community and Committee on Education, the DC Public Schools, and the DC Public Charter School Board, the Office of State Superintendent of Education, to come visit us at Imagine Andrews. Come see for yourselves how well the approach has worked at a nearby charter school located on a military base dedicated to serving military families. Thank you for the opportunity to share this information with the Committee on Education. We welcome any follow-up requests for information relating to our experience with operating a charter school on a military base. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here and adding this bit of expertise to the hearing. I do have a couple of follow-up questions. How many grades does it go through now at Imagine?
We currently serve kindergarten through eighth grade.
It is through eighth grade. So you've kind of expanded over time.
So each year, we've added a grade, and this year, we added our final grade, which is eighth grade.
Okay. And so, where do students go after they graduate from your school when they're at Imagine? So what's... where do they go for high school?
It could vary. We prepare them for college preparatory and private high schools, but there are a array of schools in Prince George's County that our students do attend.
Do you know where they tend to go? Do you have any analysis of where they tend to end up going to school, especially the military students?
So this is our first eighth-grade class.
Oh, they haven't gone yet.
Right. So we prepare them. So we'll have that data after this year.
We'll see. Next year. Yeah, okay. My bad. I'm sorry. That's a good point.
That's fine.
Does Maryland have a common lottery for other charter schools? Is that how they do it?
They do.
They do? And so, this is kind of a hybrid lottery, where it's on the base first and then... or at the same time?
So it's at the same time.
Yeah.
Currently. We have found that it was beneficial that we conduct a separate lottery, though, for the sixty-five percent. So we are currently piloting a program to do that. That... the general lottery just occurred within the last two years. Prior to that, it was a separate lottery where Imagine actually ran the lottery for the school.
But now it's general Maryland, they're moving to that.
Absolutely.
Okay. So how many students on the base don't get in, then? Do you know that? You said the list was long. Is it a lot? Is it...
So it... the... I know... how many do we have on the waiting list? Over...
About about.
Over a thousand students?
On the military list?
So that's combined.
On both.
So the base leadership has expressed a concern that there are a number of military families who's not getting into the school. So that's why we're looking at... we're looking now at piloting this separate lottery to cure that or to look more closely at that.
But there's still sixty-five percent that are... so sixty-five percent of the school are military students.
Correct.
Parents.
Correct.
Do you have any idea why the leadership of the base decided not to do a Department of Defense school? Have they... have you heard any thoughts on that or talked about that? Like, what's the reason why they would do a charter school-type model as opposed to a DOD model?
I'm not sure why they chose to go this route. I don't know if you have any thoughts.
I don't know for sure either.
I'm not sure why they chose.
Is there... do they provide financial support for the school?
The base?
Yeah. The base, the Department of Defense?
No. So initially, they provided a building for us and, you know, a number of resources. Financial support, no, but a number of resources that support the school, yes.
So what are the other ways you support the school? Is it just a per-student funding formula?
Per pupil funding.
Okay. So that's just standard, then? So like a regular school, a charter school in the... in the Maryland? That's interesting. So my last question is, do the students that aren't military children, do they have trouble getting on and off the base at all? Like, what's the way that works? How does that work?
So the process for getting on base is that each person who comes on base, whether temporary or long-term, have to either be cleared through being escorted on or short-term pass or badge. Most parents have to receive a badge, which, most recently, that process has been heightened some. So you have to pass a certain clearance in order to access the base, even if it's just to pick up your children or to volunteer in a classroom. So we have had issues with people, depending on their background, who have been denied access. Sometimes one parent, sometimes just a family member. But for the most part, that's a very small portion of our population. Most people go through the process, get cleared. As long as they pick up their badge in time, they're allowed to come on and off base. There are time restrictions, so you may only be able to come into up until six o'clock or things of that nature. But every once in a while, we have someone who doesn't... who is not allowed for reasons that are not disclosed to us, but there are those cases.
What about for your professionals in the school? They have to do some rigorous background check and everything to teach there, to work at the school?
So everyone pretty much goes through the same process, including myself. You just go... you go there, you fill out a certain amount of paperwork, they run a certain check on you based on how long you need access. That depends on how high of a... or how intense of a check they do, and then, based on that, you're either denied access or given access, so...
So have you been not able to hire people because they were denied access?
Well, what we tend to do is that we make sure that our interviews are on-site, so that if you have to interview there, we may as well find out now. And so, sometimes people are denied access before they come to the interview, and that kind of stops the process very early.
And they can't interview, then?
Right.
Right.
So it's no need moving forward.
All right. Well, you know, I don't have any follow-up questions. I think your testimony speaks really loudly of the support that you have for something like this, and I think your expertise is really important to have on the record, so I appreciate you coming down, and I appreciate... please extend my gratitude as well to your board for supporting this. And if we have any follow-up questions, we'll let you know. Or if anybody wants to come out and visit as well, we'll let you know.
We would love that.
That would be good.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I'm going to now go back up and call some other people up that have shown up since we started. Daniel Lee Dunham, Naval District Washington Regional School Liaison Officer, School Liaison Officer, Joint Base Anacostia-Boling, U.S. Navy. Captain Clyde Frank Mays, Commanding Officer of Joint Base Anacostia-Boling, U.S. Navy. And I think I'll wait... I can call Robert Williams as well, Staff Sergeant, if Mr. Williams is here. I don't think I see him. And is Bruce Villasenor here? All right. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to fill that last seat for this last public panel? Come on up. What is your name?
I'm Stephen Lippman. I'm with the Navy Officer Counsel.
Stephen Lippman?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Mr. Dunham, are you starting?
Yes, sir, I am.
Well, then, please go right ahead.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Grosso, my name is Daniel Dunham. I'm the Naval District Washington Regional School Liaison Officer, and I mainly work with families that are located on Joint Base Anacostia-Boling. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I want to take time now to kind of express my gratitude for the council and for this hearing, and I'd also like to express my gratitude for the engagement that I've had with DC Public Schools, with the District of Columbia Public Charter School Board, with the Office of the State Superintendent of Education, and with the Deputy Mayor of Education's Office. And each one of these engagements has been, um, my feeling that DC really cares about military families. I think that everybody understands the stressors that these military, military families endure. And I think that, um, today's hearing is testament, um, to the fact that they really do care and wanna take action to kind of minimize those. As is the DC, as is the, um, DC Chancellor's Directive for Military Families that was codified, uh, this past fall. Um, as is your establishment in two thousand twelve with an Interstate Compact Commission, and just to name a few. Um, as was shared earlier, military families do undergo, uh, a lot of challenges when moving into the district. I filled hundreds of calls, um, yearly, um, from parents who are looking to reside in the National Capital Region. And their number one concern, as you would imagine, is schooling. Um, in particular, they're very concerned with the quality of schools that exist in Ward Eight. They're concerned with the, um, complexity in gaining admission to your quality school programs throughout the District of Columbia. And, but they call me because they've heard that DC is on the rise. They have seen the data, they read the data, they're very well aware that DC is, um, doing great things. And they want to inquire about how they can gain access to those quality school programs. The Navy prides itself on being a good neighbor. And so when I was approached with, what are you doing, Dan, out there in the community? To try to, um, inform people of the complications that military families are undergoing when seeking enrollment into quality school programs, I indicated to them that our challenges are the same as any family in Ward Eight. And so I'm here before you today to tell you that the Navy is dedicated to your efforts on improving rigor in schools throughout DC, but namely in Ward Eight. We think that if, if our efforts can help bring about more school choice, especially in the middle school and high school levels in Ward Eight, it would not only assist the families on Joint Base Anacostia-Bowling, but would also assist families located in Ward Eight. And Councilman Grasso, you mentioned earlier the challenges families across the river face when trying to commute and access quality school programs, which right now exist in the Northwest or, or in other wards outside of Ward Eight that are not easily accessible. So placing a charter school on or near the military installation would be quite helpful. So in closing, I just wanna kind of reiterate that what's good for us is also good for the community. And I appreciate your time today and, and look forward to any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Dunham. Captain Mays?
Good morning, Mr. Grasso. Thank you for, uh, having us here and, uh, letting us, uh, tell you our story. So as you know, I'm Frank Mays, the Commanding Officer of Joint Base Anacostia-Bowling, also known as J-Bab. So, uh, as has been iterated many times here, we, of course, are east of the river in Ward Eight. Consider us, uh, neighbors of Ward Eight. You have about, uh, four thousand family members actually living on the base, of which roughly, uh, seven hundred or so are school-aged children. Just know there's about a thousand, twelve hundred school-aged children throughout DC that don't necessarily all live on the military installation. And I'll speak to that again here in a minute. But, uh, as you've heard from, uh, many of my esteemed colleagues so far, is that military families, of course, move a lot, usually about two to three years at a time. Uh, in many, many occasions, they have two to three months lead time. And, uh, and most of these moves occur in the summertime, so, uh, as has been established already, it's, uh, out of sync with the DC Lottery calendar. Daniel, as he just told us, had, uh, success with many of our folks, uh, establishing, um, getting into good schools. I know that Lecky Elementary is a, is a bright spot. We've established, especially Daniel, has established a, uh, really strong relationship with Principal James. And, uh, we relish that. And, uh, we were just there last night, uh, picking up our mentees for the, uh, coming mentoring season, if you know what I mean. Uh, and so we, uh, we have a strong relationship there. Um, he helps folks get into a lot of other DC schools. I personally have a million-dollar-a-year contract with fifteen buses that I send throughout the city to get my kids on the base, uh, throughout the city. And, uh, as, uh, was also established, many, many of these folks, many of these kids have long commutes. So some are roughly a two-hour round trip commutes each day, which is, of course, painful for a young child, anyone, but particularly a young child. Um, also established that, uh, many, many families just opt out. So we have about two hundred kids that have their own homeschooling entity on the base. And that's the largest in all of the Department of Defense. And, uh, many of these folks have told Daniel that they, you know, they would, of course, not do that. They were forced into it and they would desire other options, so, uh, that's the reason we're here. So, uh, there are seven other bases with public charter schools, including, uh, Joint Base Andrews. You taught, you heard Mr. Tonner, Mr. Rice. Uh, the Navy has one at Naval Station Great Lakes, uh, north of Chicago. Uh, these schools set aside sufficient seats to serve the base community, but also set aside seats for the nearby Savannah community. And it's been a successful model, providing a high-quality education to base and local non-military children alike. So, uh, we're also providing the side benefit of having our kids mingle with the local neighborhood, which is always good. So, of course, I'm supportive of the approach. And as such, I've, uh, set aside a facility and a plot of land to do that on the base. And to speak to some of your questions that you had earlier, we're also sensitive to folks particularly, um, having issues maybe getting on to the installation. So we're gonna move the fence line around to where that's not a factor at all. It'll be right on the edge of the, the building and the, and the land is right on the edge of the, of the installation now. We just put a fence around it, so, uh, good access right to South Cap Street. So, uh, the proposed legislation will open the door for another high-quality public charter school in Ward Eight with seats available to this population and, of course, to the rest of the city. The Navy has set aside resources to affect this real estate transaction, uh, just for your situational awareness. Um, the appropriation lapses September of next year. So, uh, of course, we can go back and, uh, get it again, but ideally, uh, that, we wouldn't have to do that. And so before I close, I, I just wanted to kind of maybe get into the weeds a little bit. If you could take a look at, uh, Bill twenty-one zero zero three nine, which is the Military Installation and Public Charter School Amendment Act of two thousand and fifteen. And in particular, line twenty-eight references, uh, should be located on a military installation. I just respectfully request that maybe during work, uh, markup, that you could, uh, use other language to not just pigeonhole a military installation, but all kids in DC. And then, uh, also in the other bill that the, uh, the mayor proffered, uh, Bill twenty-one zero four two eight on line thirty-one. As I had mentioned earlier, there's probably about, uh, we have about fifty percent of all military-related DC or, uh, school-aged kids in DC. But there's another fifty percent out there that are living in the city, but not necessarily on a base, that are also attached to the military. Uh, and on line thirty-one, it, uh, it explicitly states, a student who resides on a United States military base or installation, uh, just ideally, if you could during markup, uh, maybe, um, include some other language that's, uh, a little less exclusive to include all, uh, military-related kids in DC. So I thank you for your support for this legislation and, of course, uh, to the U.S. Armed Forces. And, uh, at this time, I'm open to any questions you may have.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Lippman?
I'm just here for support, sir.
Oh, you are, okay, great. Um, I think when we introduced this legislation at the beginning, we thought it was gonna be actually on the base. And then since then, we've developed that it, it's gonna be right outside the base, so.
So apparently, and I'm not a real estate professional, and we can, uh, have some folks come talk to you who are, but my understanding, and I'll, I'll read here. So it's called a jurisdictional transfer or a transfer of jurisdiction, which apparently is exclusive to the District of Columbia. I've been told by my, my real estate professionals, it's not an option anywhere else in America. So it's actually.
We have a lot of stuff like that, it's weird.
That's what I've heard. That this actually is somewhat advantageous, uh, my understanding, and I can, uh, we can have a, a follow-on meeting to elaborate with the professionals. But it would transfer daily management of the facility and the land to DC, but the base, the government would still retain ownership.
Right.
And we have an example now with privatized housing. So I have over a thousand family housing units on the base. Uh, the government still owns them, but we have a private company running them.
Right.
And then, uh, the District of Columbia would provide emergency services. And, uh, of course, it would avoid, uh, non-DOD personnel from having to access the installation.
Can you talk about a little bit, since we're on that topic, what the timeline on that building would be? You said that the appropriation runs out next year, but do you just have to, like, have a, uh, kind of one expenditure on it to keep it alive, or what?
So, uh, we're, we're just waiting for a vote. And as soon as we get the green light, I presume we'll press. And I can think we can expend or obligate and expend that money before the end of September.
That's what you would need to do?
Right.
All of it?
Right. And it's, uh, you know, it's not a big sum, five digits, uh, just to, uh, transfer the land over.
Okay.
Do the jurisdictional transfer to the city.
What condition is the building in now?
It's really good condition.
Oh, it is?
Uh, he actually works at it right now, so we're taking his building. And, uh, we'll be, uh, actually moving them about a quarter mile to the southeast and, or southwest. And, uh, they're getting more space and, so they're good to go, I've already asked them.
Okay, so it's really just a matter of jurisdictional switching it around and.
Right.
Putting a fence in, I guess? Is the fence not there? You'd have to put the fence around.
It currently.
Move it around?
Keeps the facility and the land, um, inside the installation. We would just move it to where it's not, um, that way.
Is that one of those nice brick walls, or is that?
No. That's on the former Navy site, we don't do brick walls. The Air Force site is brick walls.
I've seen a lot of brick walls around Navy sites too.
Okay.
But in any case, um, why not do a DOD school there? I don't understand that. And maybe, I, it's really just my curiosity, what is the difference between doing it as a charter or just an on-base DOD?
I think Daniel probably has a more eloquent answer.
Okay, that's fine.
Sir, I don't know if that's eloquent. But it would require, from what I understand, the Secretary of Defense telling Congress that there's a need for a Department of Defense school on the compound because DC cannot provide adequately for the educational needs of military children.
So there has to be a finding, so to speak, that there's not enough quality schools in the area or any, and then therefore they put it.
Right.
And, but this is the largest number of home schools, you said, in the, of any base? Uh, so that's not, I mean, I, I mean, I think our schools are making good strides and I think that we're moving in the right direction. Certainly, your support at Lecky's huge. But, uh, that wasn't enough for this, to get that finding? Or do you have to appeal to get that finding? Or, I guess I'm just confused what the process is. Why would you go charter here if you could possibly get that?
Sure, well, I don't believe that, uh, we would find the findings to be true. I believe that DC has enough quality schools in operation that, that, that effort would fall on its face.
So it's not in geographical location, it's the whole city? So that's your jurisdiction?
Right. So throughout DC right now, there exists some quality educational programs. And so what, what is the challenge for our families is that we can't access those quality programs because we don't reside, they don't reside here for, you know, as long as it takes to get into those quality school programs.
Yeah.
That, some of our families are, uh, you know, are, are here quickly. They're, you know, they're given a month's notice, if not, uh, less. And, um, some of them have to reside, uh, because they need to be close to their mission. And so, uh, so they're limited in, in the amount of time, uh, it, it would take to get into the quality school programs.
Right. Do you have an idea now of how many of your students go to DC Public School, DCPS schools? Uh, yeah, I think it's, I know it's a lot harder for them to go to charter schools, uh, because of the lottery question. But how many go to DCPS schools? Is it a lot? You mentioned, I think, twelve hundred total students in the city?
In the city.
On and off base?
And then about six hundred, seven hundred on the base.
Right.
We, we only have, um, numbers for who ride my school buses. But not everyone who goes to school from the base in DC rides my bus. So I, I can't get any other, uh, exact.
How many ride your bus?
Uh, we have.
So we have roughly two hundred and, uh, sixty-two riding the bus currently. And, um, I would say, you know, a handful, maybe seven or eight kids are actually going to charter schools.
Okay.
It could be a little higher.
They might have been here for a longer period of time and able to get in that way.
Some of, some of them have just been lucky because they were selected through the lottery process to get into those school programs.
Okay. And so how many families do you have invested at Lecky now? Do you know?
So our ridership count, which is all that I can provide for you that's accurate, is seventy-two.
At Lecky, in different grades?
Right.
Are any of them in the sixth grade?
I believe there are.
There are some in the sixth grade.
And, and so earlier, it was shared that the need for, uh, an identifier. I think this is another indication, so we, we would love to track those nineteen hundred or so, um, you know, military-connected kids, whether it be through active duty or reserve or guard, uh, throughout the District of Columbia. Because I think that, um, having, uh, and the ability to track where these kids are, are going will help us programmatically and also help the district secure some of this, uh, money that's out there to support schools for highly mobile or third-world cultured students.
So the, okay, let's say we go forward with this and it gets built and there's this charter with a preference in it. Um, let's just start with the first bill and that, you know, there's a preference for that particular charter school. That's not gonna solve the problem, right? I mean, it's gonna maybe lead towards some solution of the problem. But you still are gonna have, um, you know, the question of mid-year, you know, coming in and out. You're gonna have the question of, um, just not enough space, I would imagine, a, at some point. So talk a little bit about why you think this will at least begin to help out, you know, in, in the long run, and how we get past some of those difficulties. Cause, you know, I, I don't think, I mean, I think that there's enough students here that there's gonna be students taking full advantage of DCPS schools still for a lot of time and adding to the value of those schools and gaining a good education at Lecky and other places, that you could also fill up another school with, with students that need this. So that's, I need to hear that argument from you guys on the record.
Sure, so. Sir, do you mind if I take that question? So I believe there are, um, this is just one line of effort. There has to be more than one line of effort to improve the quality of education in, um, Ward Eight, okay? So we're, all we're doing is providing for one more school choice. And the Navy's trying to do their part by this real estate, um, transaction to provide an avenue for that to take place. Um, and, and also alleviate some of the tensions that our families experience or uncertainty that they experience when trying to move into Joint Base Anacostia-Bowling. This would, this at least fifty percent of these, as I, as I understand the law, is, uh, the here, uh, for the act is now, uh, would be there for military families. But beyond that, w- we would still need to do quite a lot to, um, advocate and to, um, provide resources to, um, um, further, uh, bring academic rigor to Blue High School.
Right.
I think that ultimately is, would be a great solution. Uh, we understand that this charter school would only really be there for middle school. So would it help at least Ward Eight students, um, you know, develop, uh, at a, um, at, at, an academic point where they would be, uh, on, uh, equal ground with their peers that are in the Northwest to vie for, um, those school programs at your specialty centers? It would put them on a, a better footing for that, to, um, to, to compete for those, those seats. Uh, so, um, so there would still need to be a lot more done. And we, we, we are, we're after this line of effort, but we're also after, um, trying to improve schools throughout DC by providing STEM enrichment programs, providing volunteerism, as we mentioned earlier, and by, um, continuing to, um, provide programmatically, um, for the staff development needs of the, um, of the staff.
So I appreciate that. Do you have an idea of who would run this school? Like, are you gonna be, uh, contracting it out? Uh, what's, what's the plan?
Well, after looking at the amendments, it's my understanding that the, um, right of the preference would be held by the District of Columbia Public Charter School Board, who would then, uh, select an operator. I'm, I'm sure that we would be consulted and we would have a role in that process.
Interesting.
But I believe the District of Columbia Public Charter School Board would be the one that would bestow that on top of an operator.
We'll ask them about that on the record.
Well, I would hope so.
Yeah, so it says fifty percent right now, that fifty percent of the seats. And, uh, the previous panel mentioned that they have a sixty-five percent, first, you know, preference over at Andrews. What's your, what is your thought on that? Do you have, uh, I mean, I think we talked about this some when we introduced it, fifty was, seemed like a good number, but.
We wanna be good neighbors. And, uh, I think that, um, from the outside community, we would, uh, easily be able to fill fifty percent. My boss has chimed in, he said that, uh, we want to be good neighbors.
That's great.
And so fifty percent is, uh, is good for us.
So fifty-fifty in the charter school there? Okay. I don't have any more questions, you know, I think, uh, uh, one thing I need is for you guys, if you have your testimony written down, we could use a copy of it for the record, uh, make sure we submit it, uh, to my committee. Um, and we'll go from there. And, uh, we're gonna hear from the government now and, uh, and we'll go from there. But I appreciate, and I also wanted to put on the record, I know you were originally considering doing an elementary school there and that you switched, uh, to a middle school after your longer conversations with the principal at Lecky and other community members. And I think that is also a good sign of, uh, trying to be a good partner in the community. And I appreciate that. And I encourage you to keep working with Principal James over at Lecky and, and, you know, making that school a great school. So thank you for that, I appreciate it.
We sure will, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now going to, uh, move to the government witness. We have two outstanding witnesses from the government today. We have Executive Director Scott Pearson from the DC Public Charter School Board. And we have Deputy Mayor for Education Jennifer Niles. Uh, who would like to go first? Scott?
Go first. Um, thank you, Chairman Grasso, for holding this hearing and for introducing, um, one of the two bills before us today. Uh, you have my written testimonies, so rather than reading it, I thought I would just, uh, respond to a couple of the questions that you, um, you had asked. Um, the first has to do with the notion of, uh, whether these bills or one of the bills would solve the issue of military families transferring into, uh, a school late. And it's my belief that the, the bill that you introduced would help address that issue. Um, the mayor's bill, which we support and which we think would be a great benefit for military families, would essentially provide a student with a preference in, uh, in, in the lottery, equivalent to, let's say, a sibling. So that when the common lottery was run, um, in the spring, um, military families would have a preference. But, um, if a military family weren't part of that lottery, then other families, other children would be given spaces and the school would be full. Under the bill that you introduced that would allow a school on or near, uh, Joint Base Anacostia-Bowling, they could establish a preference, um, they could establish a preference by applying to the Public Charter School Board. Um, that's similar to the special education preference that this committee passed a couple of years ago. And so it could be designed differently. And, um, for example, we heard, um, the, um, the folks from Imagine talking about how they run two lotteries. Well, under this preference, the school could set aside half of their seats. And, for example, they may not fill all of those seats during the lottery. And the remainder of those seats could remain open, should the school wish, so that a family arriving at the base in July would have access to a seat. So that, that's how I interpret the, the bill, if, if, um.
So we could establish it upfront, that that's the process and that allow it through the board? Or through some action I have?
Through the board.
Yeah.
Through the charter board. Now, it's possible, if the school is wildly popular, that it could fill up, um, in the spring and then there wouldn't be seats. But at least your, your legislation would allow for that possibility. Um, and then the. Um, and then the second was, you've asked a few times about, uh, why the Department of Defense wouldn't establish a school. Um, I never worked for, for the Department of Defense Education Agency, but in my years at the Department of Education, I was the person who worked most closely with them. I spent a lot of time with them. And my understanding is, is that the principal, um, purpose of the Department of Defense schools is to open schools overseas for military families who live overseas, such as we heard about the woman whose child went to a school in Okinawa. The history of the US schools, as I understand it, is that with the exception of one school in West Point, all were open, uh, subsequent to President Truman desegregating the military. And you had a situation where military families were now desegregated, uh, but, but in the South were forced to go to segregated schools. And so in response, DODIA opened schools exclusively in the, in the South to provide an integrated school option. And to my knowledge, DODIA has not opened schools since in the United States. Um, in fact, there's periodic talk about whether DODIA should close those schools because now, you know, you no longer have de jure segregation in these, in these places. And they haven't because they're popular with families. But, um, but I am not aware that there's any interest in DODIA, uh, in the Department of Defense Education schools to open more schools anywhere in the continental United States.
While you're testifying, what about the question of who's going to operate this and how does that work?
So we, we have not been soliciting applications. Um, we would, any school who wanted to open on that base would have to go through the same rigorous process that we subject any, any new school to. It's possible it could be an existing charter school that wanted to open another campus. Or it could be someone from outside, because as we've heard, there are organizations, for example, Imagine, serves students in, in Anacostia, um, excuse me, at Andrews Base. Um, there's a school, a high-quality school network in Chicago called Learn Schools that does a very good job with the, with the charter school in North Chicago. So we would, we would have an application process. I would expect because the Navy is making available a building and land.
That's right.
It would be quite attractive to organizations. And, and it's a unique opportunity and a unique challenge. Um, the mobility of military families poses real challenges to a school.
So I, I'm going to get to you Deputy Mayor Niles, but I'll just follow up on this real quick. The, the, they'll offer a building, the building will be ready to roll, you can move into this building. So then you're going to have more than one operator that's going to want to do that likely, right? So let's say you have two or three. Do they all then present applications to you? And the charter board then approves it to go into that building? Is that what we're looking at?
The, um, so my understanding is that we would approve the charter, but the military would be the landlord of the building. And so they would get to choose who went in there. I, I don't think we would have such an arms-length process. I think we would want to work closely with them and make sure that the school that, that met our standards also met their standards and that it was.
Then you go together.
A well-coordinated process.
Okay. Um, Deputy Mayor Niles, do you want to present your testimony?
Good morning Chairman Grasso and members of the Education Committee Council staff. My name is Jenny Niles and I'm, I'm the Deputy Mayor for Education. I'm happy to be here today and testify on behalf of the Bowser administration on the school choice, excuse me, for Military Families Amendment Act of two thousand and fifteen. As you know, the proposed legislation allows for public charter schools to provide an admissions preference to a student who resides on a United States military base or installation in the District of Columbia and who has a parent or guardian who is an active-duty US military personnel. The purpose of this bill is to increase access to public school options equitably for military families. The women and men of the United States military have chosen to serve our country and Washington DC would like to show our support and gratitude for that service by assisting these families with our school placement process. Our office recognizes that school-aged children residing on military bases face obstacles to educational success, such as frequent moves and deployment of one or more of their parents. Increasing the predictability of school options for these children is important to us as a city and is a shared goal both for DCPS and our public charter school sectors. This bill would include students residing at the Joint Base Anacostia Bowling, Fort McNair, the Marine Barracks and the Washington Navy Yard. Currently, the Joint Base Anacostia Bowling is the largest base on which the vast majority of families with school-aged children live, um, on base, living on base reside. Of these, two hundred and forty-seven students were enrolled in DCPS or charter school in school year fourteen fifteen. And according to quick calculations in the elementary level, eighty-eight students attend DCPS schools and seventy-nine students attend, um, public charter schools as of last year. Both the Public Charter School Board and the military officials have expressed their desire to provide increased access to school options for military families. Based on conversations with stakeholders, we have a better understanding of some of the unique needs of military families. Thus, we are asking the council to consider a bill to allow charter schools to adopt a military preference if they so choose. While this bill does not mandate public charter schools to offer this preference, it provides an option should a school want to provide this preference. The context for this bill also is that DCPS already has policies in place aimed to better serve military families. For instance, DCPS allows such children to enroll at any point during the school year in a school of their choice pending classroom and program availability. In addition, DCPS is expanding to serve middle-grade students at Leckie Elementary, where many Joint Base Anacostia Bowling Elementary School families enroll their children. By enabling any public charter school in the dis, in the city to offer this preference, we are extending the preference that DCPS provides to families and not limiting a military family's options to schools near the military base or installations. This provides a consistent way for interested charters to serve these families. The My School DC team is ready to, to work with interested charter schools to operationalize the preference for the two thousand seventeen common lottery. My team and I are committed to finding creative ways to better serve these families and believe this is a fair and positive step towards this goal. Thank you again for holding this hearing on this bill and I urge the council to pass it in show, in a show of support for our military families. I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate this. Um, so you're, you're thinking that we should go with the one that is more broadly applied and not single out for the bill that we introduced earlier this year? What's your, I mean, can you just say that and kind of?
Sure. I think it's important that we, um, make the public education as consistent as possible. And so having, um, charter schools be able to offer the preference would mirror the preference that DCPS is giving to families. So it's important to create that coherence, um, from my point of view.
So if, um, so I guess what's happened here is that, you know, the, the military wants to support having a facility near the base to try to, I think, give the option to these two hundred or so kids that are still at homeschooling and stuff like that. And that, it seems to me like a reasonable amount too. It's like fifty percent of the school. It's not saying we want a hundred percent of this school just for these kids. Um, and I don't see how that's going to cut in too much to the rest. You know, like it's a, an additional need that's not being met. It's not something that now all of a sudden people are going to flock back there. Um, and so I, I guess I wonder, my only question is, what is the hang-up then with that? Like, if you have, it like, let's say they just wanted to put a charter school in there that just followed all the same rules of everybody else. Would you have an issue with that?
Not necessarily. But I think that it'd be important to do something perhaps sooner than we, it, it may be that that school could get running soon. But it may be that that's not the case given. Um, I think that the jurisdiction part is a process and we have some other experience in the district about how federal land getting transferred to the district hasn't always been the fastest, um, moving, uh, set of decisions.
Right.
So I think that, um, trying to create that coherence as soon as possible is the urgency.
Yeah.
The need for the original bill, um, I have not investigated, um, fully. I'm more interested in the consistency, um, component and would want to know what kind of need there is, but, um, wouldn't necessarily doubt that there is that need.
Right. So a combination of these two bills might make sense. And it's not like you're saying you're opposed to the first bill necessarily. You just haven't done enough research on it at this point. You're really pushing for the bill that, that you all introduced, uh, recently around trying to spread the possibility for military families to take advantage across the city.
Yeah. And I think I'd want to fully understand what the impact would be if a new school went there. But that's not necessarily a no. That's a more information to, uh, better understand how the, how any new, this is, in the, one of the reasons that the cross-sector task force wants to tackle, um, and, and I think the city wants the task force to tackle, how we figure out how to coordinate is, is that individual schools are not necessarily bad ideas, but the, but, uh, having that broader context and having us be able to look at the whole thing will be important for us to, um, know the implications.
Captain May mentioned a couple of changes and one was to the bill that you, uh, pushed, you know, sent down. And it was, uh, saying that they shouldn't have to actually reside on the base, that it should be open to the, really lots and lots of military families that are active-duty military who live off-base too. Do you have a problem with that or is that just something that, is there, is there intention there to not include them?
Yeah, there was an intention, but it, it was more about the consistency of being with the DCPS policy. So I think that there, there are two things. One is, is that, um, and forgive me, my, my understanding is not, is not hugely deep. But my understanding is, is that the folks who live on the bases often have the least economic choices about where to send their students. And so many of the other families who are not living on the base are actually choosing their housing relative to the schools that they want to go to. And so one of the things that is really important is whenever we look at a new preference to, um, understand what implications it might have. And the, um, one of the implications, I think, that, um, that I would not want to have happen is a new preference decrease the likelihood of an at-risk student or a student who is in a subgroup that, um, has historically, um, not been served well. Um, that de, that likelihood decrease. And so, uh, the small number of, of, um, so it's one, the consistency with DCPS's policy so that it's a coherent, and right now DCPS's policy applies to those students who only have family members on the base. And the second is, we'd need to do another analysis if it included the families who have the economic power to live off the base.
I'm not sure.
And to make sure that, uh, it didn't, um, decrease the, the likelihood that at-risk kids. This is not unlike when we've thought about, um, the founders or when, when the council considered the founders. Making sure that that preference is, is, is rel, is, is quite small. And the overall number is small, but that would be, uh.
But I think to Chancellor, I don't know, maybe, I mean, she can certainly submit something for the record if she wanted. But Chancellor Henderson, I think that if any military family presented themselves anytime during the year, she would, if there was space, I would imagine they would, you know, like, like say you're assigned here, but you're not on the base. Are you saying that if you're not on the base, she doesn't currently, uh, try to make accommodations?
So the chancellor has, um, the power to, um, to use her.
Yeah, okay.
But the chancellor has very rarely used that in any context, not just in the context for military families. And the, the policy, I'm looking to my team to make sure I'm saying this right. The policy that DCPS solidified that, that was mentioned and was said, was praised is actually just for families who, um, who live on the base. The only other thing I would add is that, um, that with a preference, um, uh, if in fact, um, a school was full, every preference, the preference would still, um, take place on the waiting list. So that, um, while, uh, the idea of having a new school and seats set aside that were always open is one that, uh, would certainly, then a student with a preference who comes in the middle of the year would have a spot. The preference itself would still have power in the middle of the year.
If there is an open seat.
If there's an open seat and with.
Like Scott said.
Yeah. And with, um, anticipated move to changing the way we pay our schools to incent, um, our schools to have students join in the middle of the year.
Right.
So hopefully both, both of those things would also, um, uh, benefit our, our families of kids whose parents are in the military and living on the base.
Before we move forward, I just want to recognize we've been joined by Councilmember LaRubi May from Ward Eight. How you doing? Um, and I just want to, if you want to open, uh, make a statement or ask some questions, uh, you could do it now.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I do, I was watching a little bit of the hearing, uh, online to Deputy Mayor, Mr. Director. So this is my question. So I had an opportunity to meet with the, the Naval District Regional School Liaison in reference to this project. And one of the questions that I asked, so, um, he kind of walked me through the process that they don't want to put the school on base because security issues. And so we, in Ward Eight, we know that even trying to get job projects on the basis is an issue for our residents to be able to access it. So that's kind of why they came up with this plan to kind of carve out and do that. So my question to him was, you know, I get my, my brother's Navy, my niece and nephew's are military kids. So I get that there's a, there's a set of resources that can come along with the Navy or the military supporting a school. And, and I get you want to carve it out so that then it gives greater access ability for students. And so I asked him though, um, why, if it, if it's really the intent to have a school that's open to the community, why wouldn't you look to a site in Ward Eight and, and going, taking a school to the community where you can bring the resources of a military school or a military-supported school versus trying to have residents of Ward Eight or any of the district actually come to the outskirts of, of the base? Cause in Ward Eight, the JBAB and Ward Eight are two different communities, two different worlds. We don't interact very well. I see the Coast Guard here. I even told, uh, the gentleman from the Navy that we have a significant relationship with the Coast Guard and how community-focused they are. And his response was that, uh, that was never offered. There was never an option for them to look at a school in the community. And so my question to you would be, why wasn't that an option? Or was it, did they not ask the question to, and that's why that wasn't given an answer? Or was there no room around the conversation of saying, hey, if we want to open up a, a military-supported charter school and, and want to bring those resources to kids in Ward Eight? Cause to me, i- if you're supported by the military, you're going to bring that extra money in there? I want you in the heart of Ward Eight so that then we begin to look at how we bring the base to being more community, uh, focused and more being integrated and making sure that kids in our community get a true benefit from the school. So can you speak to that Deputy Mayor?
Sure. I mean, it, the, the key issue is, is that we don't, um, have a way, we have not created a way for, uh, set aside in a sense of a location for a charter school specifically outside of the very limited, um, number of, uh, schools that, um, former DCPS schools that are now vacant. And so my guess is, is that that wasn't on the table because there actually wasn't a location, um, on the table. I'll, um, I'll ask Scott to, to describe that, the conversations they've had. But, um, it wasn't something, it wasn't a conversation that I had had, but that's what I imagine, um, why it wasn't put on the table.
Mr. Pearson?
Sure. I, I, the, in the discussions that we've had, I mean, there's very few public school buildings that are available right now, um, in Ward Eight. Uh, and we've been having a terrible time even getting access to those. For example, Malcolm X has been sitting empty for years with no, um, prospect of a charter school going in there.
We have a plan for Malcolm X.
That's great to hear. And then, you know, we have many schools. DC Prep is currently operating out of portables in Ward Eight, unable to get access to, to a public building despite the fact that there are many in Ward Seven and Eight that are sitting vacant or are being used to store files. Um, in the specific case of, of JBAB, I, I think there were a couple of things that have been driving this. One is that they actually have a building and land that is at the edge of the base that they believe they could make available. So that's such a rare thing. Um, and that the thought was, well, why would you, you know, pass that up? Because it actually is quite a bit of land, enough land for a field, for example. Um, and it's, and it's an existing high-quality building. The other is that the, um, the Navy testified, uh, the Captain May has testified that they currently spend about a million dollars a year busing their students. And, um, and they're under a lot of pressure to reduce that amount. And so if a school were located somewhere more than walking distance from the base, um, I think that this would, would then require the Navy to continue with, uh, their busing program. Albeit for shorter distances, but that's clearly, um, a pain point for them.
But so, so, but let me just ask the question. But so there was never a conversation about a, a different site in the community?
There was not, no.
Okay, okay, okay. Um, all right. I mean, and I, I get the convenience of that. I just think that, Mr. Chairman, if you indulge me a couple more minutes. I, I just think that, uh, when we look at test results and when we look at those additional things and resources that we need to put into our school system, that we, there's a great appreciation that, uh, you know, the PTA that has, you know, uh, military moms, right, that are able to stay home and just additional resources. We know that that creates a greater likelihood of a success. And we know that when we look at the, the disparity, the race disparity gap that we have in education, that if we're going to put a school, uh, in Ward Eight, right, that we look at the community in, in terms of trying to say, hey, we have a resource in Ward Eight that instead of continuing to let that resource be isolated, because as I expressed to, uh, Mr. Dunham, is that Ward Eight doesn't engage with the base. And putting a school on the edge of the base isn't, that's not going to change that, right? And so I, so I, I get and maybe that the whole intent. And so I get, and maybe that the whole intent only is for the school to be for military kids, right? And that you really don't want to engage kids from the community into the school. And if that's the case, then, you know, I prefer that that be articulated. But if there is some, if you're saying that you want it so that you're going to bring additional resources, or that you're saying that you're carving and putting it out so that you can have other people to do it, I think that we just have an obligation to look at saying, looking at different options to be able to look and make sure that the children in Ward Eight that don't have the privilege of the resources associated with the military get that option. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman May. Sure.
Thank you. Every discussion that we've had has the full expectation that this school would be a community school that was, that had half of the students not being military students. That's been, in fact, we heard from the folks at Andrews Air Force Base that their school has a law that sets aside 65% of the seats. And when we were in discussions going back and forth, we said, no, that's not what we want. We want this to be a 50-50 school. And so while it may be located right next to JBAB, the full intention, and I think the expectation, is that it's going to be a school that serves half students from the surrounding community and half students from the base.
And so, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I have a great appreciation for that, Mr. Pearson. But what I understand to be the reality of those of us who live in Ward Eight is that you don't have, we don't have, and, you know, I think maybe the naval officer, Mr. May is new and I haven't had a chance to have a conversation about how we have better integration. But bowling and Ward Eight are two different worlds. People from Ward Eight don't do very much on the base. People on the base don't do very much in Ward Eight. Now, we don't have a lot, they have the commissary and things are cheaper, I get that. And so even putting it on the edge isn't going to increase the likelihood that folk from Ward Eight, student, some of our greatest needs, we can agree, right? Some of our greatest needs students are in Ward Eight, are going to engage just because you put it on the edge, the same way that they do not engage on the base is similar to the edge of the base. And so I think that if the intent is to be a community school, then let's have some, let's be creative. Let's have some conversation about having a community school sponsored by the military in the community versus on the edge of the base. And so that's just my concern. And, Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Councilwoman May. And I'll just say for the record that I actually believe that Captain May and JBAB folks have worked hard to try to integrate in the community with this program. They originally were going to be doing an elementary school and chose to switch it to a middle school because of the engagement from military families at Leckie Elementary. And so I think there is an effort, I think there's a genuine effort here, but I think there's also a real need for families that are on the base who feel like they could use another quality choice in their community. And so the second thing I'll say is, you know, I wouldn't say, people are going to go there, that people will go there. If it's a good school, people will go over there and participate and engage, and there'll be a line to get in. And that's the way charters work. There is not a preference for students from Ward Eight, I understand that. And that can be frustrating because there will probably be students from all over the city that want to go there, and that'll be a competition that'll happen. But in the long run, I think, you know, if we believe in charters as a good option and we think that we want to serve military families in the city and give them an option to send their students to a public school that's right there, I think this makes sense. I think the other thing that makes sense is that there's a building. The building's done. I asked them on the record, when are you going to build the building? And they looked at me like I was crazy, because there's already a building built and it's already being used and it's going to be turned into a school. So the fact that they're willing to carve it out and make sure that people don't have to go through all of the background checks to get into the, to the base, I asked Imagine, who's out at Andrews, and they talked about that as a serious struggle, is people getting on the base, whether you're going there to visit your child or do a parent-teacher conference or just to volunteer. It's really hard. And so this is going to be outside of the security measures, which I think makes sense. And I think that it's good for us to continue to try to enhance as much as we can the relationships that we have in the District of Columbia with our military bases and military personnel. You know, the District of Columbia is the, you know, capital of the United States of America. We have the oldest military bases in the country located here, and an obligation, I think, to do our best to try to do it. I agree with you, Councilwoman May, that we have not, in the past, had great ability to relate and to have good community relations there. And we struggle continuously with heightened security measures and the difficulty of really getting in there and being a real part of the community, but that doesn't mean that we don't, just don't do it. And I think 50-50 is a big goal, and I think it's an appropriate goal here. So I appreciate that. I don't have any more questions. I think that this is something that we're going to look at. I am going to leave the record open, though, for a few weeks. It will be open until November 19, 2015, for further comment, if anyone wishes to submit testimony. And in particular, Deputy Mayor Niles, if you'd be kind enough to spend a few minutes to just look at the other bill, the implications of it, what you see as the need or don't need, and opine on that, that would be useful. It would be good to have the mayor's opinion on whether or not that bill should move forward on the record. And if you don't put it on the record, well, then, you know, you leave it open to the council to move forward in our own devices, and you know what happens there. I'd rather work collaboratively with you. The Committee on Education is actually holding another hearing next Monday, November 2, at 11:00 a.m., jointly with the Committee on Transportation and the Environment, to discuss school modernization questions. It's a follow-up to our hearing earlier this year on this matter. The time is now 11:18, and the same day that we started, and this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.